Welcome to Woodstock City Council. It is Thursday, November the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. This meeting is being held electronically in accordance with section two thirty-eight, subsection three point three of the municipal act, and section sixteen point six point two four of the City of Woodstock procedural bylaw. This meeting is being livestreamed to the city's YouTube channel, and a recording will be posted on the city's website following the meeting. The meeting will also be broadcast on Rogers TV. An agenda of the meeting can be found on the city's website at the agendas, meetings, and minutes page. Councillors will be raising their hands in view of their webcam when moving a motion, requesting to speak, and when a vote is being taken. Councillors will be, if they're disconnected or having technical difficulties, we will take a recess in order to attempt to rectify the issues. If technical difficulties exist that prevent the meeting from continuing, the meeting will be adjourned and reconvened at a later time. If a councillor needs to leave the meeting at any time, they're requested to inform the clerk. With that, I would ask that the councillors turn on their webcams. There we are. Welcome, everyone. And first, do we have any disclosures of conflict of interest? Seeing none, any disclosures of new business? Matters arising from the minutes? Then we'll have the minutes from the November fourth regular meeting. Councillor Pedder?
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Tate, that the minutes of the regular meeting of Woodstock City Council held on November fourth, two thousand and twenty-one be adopted.
Thank you. Any errors or omissions in the minutes? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And we have no additions to the agenda or presentations or delegations today. So our next item would be consideration of correspondence. And we have from the Woodstock Public Library, a request from the CEO for carryovers. Councillor Lotter?
Thank you. I'll move that Woodstock City Council authorized the Woodstock Public Library Board to move funds from the two thousand and twenty-one year-end surplus into the library reserve accounts.
Thank you. And a seconder? Councillor Tate, discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries. And next up, we have staff presentations, and we're gonna go into our capital budget presentation. We have our Director of Administrative Services, the Treasurer, Diane Campbell with us, as well as David Creary, our Chief Administrative Officer. Welcome.
Thank you, your worship. Just take a moment to share screen. Okay. Can everybody see the presentation? Good. All right. Thank you, worship and council. On behalf of administration, I'm pleased to present council with the two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-six capital budget. This very short presentation will be a team effort. I'll provide a high-level overview of the proposed budget. And Mrs. Campbell, our new Director of Administrative Services, will provide details towards the end on financing the proposed program. City Council will recall that approval is only requested for the first year, two thousand and twenty-two, in this case. The remaining years are simply forecasts. Our council has called a special budget meeting for Tuesday, November twenty-third, and Thursday, November twenty-fifth, if necessary, to review the proposed budget in detail with the remainder of administration. This meeting is at five P M. It is an open meeting. It will be livestreamed as well as recorded, should anyone wish to review it at any time afterwards. The plan is to have council approve the two thousand and twenty-two capital program at the next regular meeting of City Council on December ninth. And we will upload the proposed capital budget and related documents to the city website so that the public can have access to it. Okay, so brief overview. So in two thousand and twenty-two, the total estimated cost of all of the projects, including sewer and water, which are funded by sewer user fees and water user rates that our residents pay to the County of Oxford, totals about twenty-five and a half million dollars. So just for comparison purposes, that's about one point one million higher than last year. Our own purpose capital budget, which is projects that are financed by the city itself, not through things such as sewer and water user fees that are paid to the county. It totals twenty-two point three million, which is roughly two hundred thousand dollar increase over last year. Now, the next four years are the forecast years, two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-six. The total estimated cost of the projects, including sewer and water in that forecast four-year period is about a hundred forty-seven million. And our own purpose cost of projects about a hundred and twenty-three million. So it's roughly about thirty-six million a year for the those projects, including sewer and water, and thirty million dollars a year for our own purpose projects. So two thousand and twenty-two capital spending, we always like to take a look at how much of the program is being dedicated to maintain and replace our existing capital assets versus how much is new growth-related capital spending? And this year, it's about a sixty-one thirty-nine split. Which is better. We always like to see a bias towards spending to maintain and replace and keep in good repair the things that we already own. So this year, at sixty-one, we're not bad. We're better than we were last year at fifty-four percent. Road renewal projects always makes up a significant portion of any proposed capital program. And the proposed program include proposes to continue spending at the same level for road resurfacing at one point six four million. Slight increase in surface asphalt, twenty thousand to three hundred and forty thousand. And there's a fairly hefty half a million dollar increase in proposed spending for road reconstruction. This isn't getting more road work done. This is quite simply inflationary effects and the cost of regulation to get the same amount of work done. And it's something that we saw impacting the operation this year with actual tender pricing coming in higher than our estimated costs. So this is reflecting really trying to get the same amount of work and the increased cost. And in fact, there's a hundred thousand dollars that's budgeted in two thousand and twenty-two that is for excess soil regulations, which is new provincial regulation that significantly impacts the the actual cost of getting a road reconstructed. We'll move into the building projects. So for next year, we don't have anything on the on the docket that is significant for building projects. For the most part, it's preparing for future years. We're proposing a city hall expansion concept to to look to perhaps expand city hall to the west into the Zavian property, as well as getting a jump on the Southgate Center project, which is scheduled for two thousand and twenty-three. We'd like to have council approve funds to hire the professional consultants, the architect, the structural engineers, to begin the process of preparing the final designs and the tender documents so that in two thousand and twenty-three, we're ready to go. The forecast years have a number of projects that are significant in dollar value. Many of these are recreation facility related. And you're going to find sprinkled throughout the capital budget, a number of projects that are recreation facility related. And all of these are really subject to change because the timing is quite awkward in that the recreation facility needs study has just been released to the public for comment, and we we hope to get this to council for the December meeting. So the facility needs study will make recommendations with respect to the priorities and the scale and scope of recreation facilities that the city needs for the short, medium term. And that study really would have been helpful to inform the capital budget and capital forecast, but we just didn't have it. And so much of what we have in here is 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 projects that have been carried in past in past capital programs, just carried forward. So these are all subject to change once council reviews the need study, debates the need study and makes decisions about these recreation facility priorities. So in parks and recreation for two thousand and twenty-two, we have a number of of investments proposed. This is really phase two of Tip O'Neill. If council recall, there was an investment made in enhancing Tip O'Neill, the city's primary sports field and Southside Park in two thousand and twenty-one. This continues that work to improve the dugout, the backstop. We have replacement of the pavilion in Cowan Park, bringing sewer and water services to the Paddock North Shore. So so the splash pad, the washroom facilities, you know, public drinking water can be available to that North Shore. Parks is proposing a new viewing platform to be built in Brick Pond for educational purposes. This would be on the west side of Springbank, south of the tracks, probably more easily accessed off the end of Dufferin Street. And an investment in a playground that Cowan feels. We do have in future years, you'll notice as you go through the capital program, projects such as a cricket field proposed in two thousand and twenty-three as well. But all of that will be subject to review through the rec facility needs study. Industrial land development. In two thousand and twenty-two, we have the the final piece that's required for Petula Ridge Phase Two. The million dollars is our share estimated share of the sanitary pumping station that will bring that next eighty to ninety acres of the of farmland to development readiness. And we're also proposing a further investment of a million dollars to continue the preparation for the Northeast Industrial Park. So this is a continuation of the studies and the designs to bring this this industrial park forward. There's a further eighteen million dollars in the forecast years to actually develop that industrial park so that it can be marketed for sale. And I guess with that, there there is one other significant project that I haven't put a slide in for, but it is the Southside Pond project. Council will recall that a number of years ago, this came forward for approval, but there was no way to finance the project without going to debt. Council made the decision, rather than to go into debt, to put aside five hundred thousand dollars a year for the next, I believe it was four or five years to accumulate this, the funds in order to get this project done without resorting to debt. Well, this two thousand and twenty-two will be the final year to raise that final amount. And that project is is in the budget to go forward next year. So that will be a good one to finally get off the books. So, you know, any capital budget is probably only as current as the day that we write it. And in even in the last week, there's been a few things that have popped up that will probably come forward with motions for council. One thing that was noticed is that we we actually have two hundred thousand dollars left in the asphalt resurfacing reserve. Not sure quite how that came to be, but it's it is there. I suspect it's a it's a surplus allocation approved by council that didn't get plugged into the capital program, but it's better. It's money that's better in Mr. Ellis's budget so that he can put it down on the road to good use rather than sitting in a reserve. So there's there's a potential for council to move a motion to put an extra two hundred thousand dollars into the road resurfacing program if council so wishes. And there is also perhaps more security enhancements that could come forward from our public works in terms of yard security requirements. So that is still being explored, and it's just something that came recently out of some some damage that was done over the last weekend. So as council reviews this, as we go forward, there could be motions that we would prefer to see council move forward. And with that, I'll ask Ms. Campbell to take over the financing.
Thank you. Your worship and members of council, as Mr. Curry had mentioned, I'll be providing some additional details with respect to financing the two thousand and twenty-two capital budget. So I have just a couple of general comments with respect to the year. We have certainly continued to experience effects from the ongoing COVID situation during two thousand and twenty-one. There've been some supply chain issues and difficulty finding contractors periodically, both of which I think we're going to contribute to probably a larger than normal list of carryovers that will be brought forward to the council on at the December meeting. And just with respect to what Mr. Curry had just mentioned about the asphalt resurfacing, we did do a more normal surplus allocation for the two thousand and twenty surplus, and we were able to put five hundred thousand dollars into the asphalt resurfacing. And then the balance went into the capital reserve. So that's why we've ended up with a little bit extra there. With respect to the specifics of the two thousand and twenty-two capital budget, we're proposing total expenditures of just over twenty-five and a half million dollars. The funding will be coming from our capital revenue account to the tune of about three and a half million dollars. And that that is a financing source. It's continuing to be impacted by COVID and a reduction in the slot machine revenue. So we just got our third quarter payment, and it's coming up, but it isn't going to be, the total is not going to be back in typical of the older, the previous years where it's been higher. So there's signs of improvement coming, but we will still be short what we're used to being able to allocate into our capital program. Any residual that we do have from that funding will apply there after we do our normal allocations. With respect to reserves and reserve funds, it's about thirteen point nine million dollars. There's nothing really to note there, other than our municipal building reserve is somewhat impacted by the loss of of the rent that we used to contribute to the from the sixteen Graham Street rent from Hydro One. And if you look through the reserve and reserve fund listing, you'll see that we were able to finance the two thousand and twenty-two budget, but it does go into the red for a few years in between two thousand and twenty-two and twenty-six. Debt is as usual, nine hundred thousand dollars, and it's all planned to be used on road projects in two thousand and twenty-two. That's our usual annual contribution. And we're looking for about three point two million dollars from the county from water and sewer rates in order to fund the water main and sanitary sewer work. And grants is just over four million dollars. That's primarily federal gas tax, which is undergoing a name change to the Canada Community Build Fund, dedicated gas tax and a couple of the other infrastructure programs that have been announced in more recent years. And a couple of small grant opportunities. With respect to debt, it's always an important tool used to finance our facilities and infrastructure, anything that's longer term in nature. Our two thousand and twenty-one estimated outstanding debt is, but there's a typo there, seventeen million, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, million dollars. And then the principal is around fourteen million, nine hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars. Two thousand and twenty-two proposed debt financing, as I mentioned, approximately nine hundred thousand dollars for road program. The twenty-three to twenty-six forecast has a significant amount of debt in it, thirty-five million dollars. Number of large projects that were highlighted just a few minutes ago with regard to facilities mainly. They will definitely require debt refinancing if we're going to move forward with any of those projects. Our debt repayment limit for the city is high. It's sixteen million, four hundred thousand, which is set by the province each year. And that that is the amount that we could repay from debt. So it's obviously we have capacity to issue a significant amount of debt. And and the debt that's forecast within this program is within our limit. With respect to interest rates, they're still low. They're not quite as low as they were last year, but we just received our current interest rates and for ten our ten-year debenture, it would be two point four two percent and twenty is two point nine one percent. That's about one percentage point higher than two thousand and twenty. So if the rate stays low like that, and we do want to issue some of these debentures on some of these larger projects, it will bode well for the for the capital forecast. And with that, I guess we'll have been questions, or I'm not sure. Where we go from there. That's all. That's it for me.
Thank you. I guess I would start with a question, and I don't want to put you on the spot. It's one that I would have asked your predecessor in other years, just to put that debt number in perspective. When a portion of that is for our industry and commercial payers, and then the balance is for our residential. What does that work out to per per home?
You're putting me on the spot. I don't have that in front of me, but I could certainly get it for you.
Okay, I I would appreciate that for one of our future budget discussions. Because I I want to make sure that my calculation is is close to yours. Mine, I have it at about six hundred dollars a house. So putting it in perspective, if someone was buying a five hundred thousand dollar house, they're getting a mortgage of about six hundred dollars for for that home, for all the assets we have. But yeah, if you could have that calculation in the future, I'd just like to see if mine comes close to yours. Questions of council regarding the the capital plan? Councillor Schattenberg?
Yes, related to capital and operating, which of course is not until the new year that we look at that. But my question through to David Curry or to Diane Campbell is is carryovers, but the the money is that was in this year's budget. Doesn't matter if it was a capital project or an operating expense. What happens to that money that maybe was not spent in two thousand and twenty-one for whatever reason?
That's what we'll be bringing to council at the next meeting is any projects that are in the works. They might have been started or there things are ordered and they're not received yet. We request council council's approval to carry that fund over. We set it aside as committed within our reserves. And then we don't rebudget it. It's just there so that when the product comes in or the work is complete, we have funds available to pay for it.
Thank you. And that keeps our our books clean at year end and our auditors happy and a few more calculations for our fine finance team to do on our asset management. Other questions of council? Well, I I think that's it. So thank you very much for your presentation. And look forward to more discussions as we get into the budget greater detail. Next item on the agenda is the application for tax relief. And for the viewers at home, this is if there's been a major change with your property, if had a fire, the property's demolished or a big change like that. This is where we go ahead and do that. So let's see, who would like to move that? We'll go with councillor Accioni, and a seconder will be councillor Pedder.
Thank you, worship. Moved by myself, the Woodstock City Council direct the treasurer to cancel, reduce, or refund the taxes levied in two thousand and twenty-one as detailed on the attached reports.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. Then next up is our statements for revenue and capital for ten months out of twelve, and we'll go with councillor Talbot and councillor Tate.
Thank you, worship. I'll move that Woodstock City Council receive the statement of revenue and expenditure and the statement of capital expenditures for the period ending October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one as information.
Thank you. Discussion? And I think it'd be a good time to maybe bring our our new treasurer back online to let us know where we're at on this, and then we'll see if council has more questions.
With respect to the operations, we're sort of ten twelfths of the way through the year, so we would anticipate that we're a little over eighty percent through on our expenditures, and we're coming in under that. So that's always good to see. Revenues always look over because once the taxes are levied for the year, they show for a hundred percent.
Thank you. And councillor Schattenberg? You had a question?
Yeah, thanks. A question from the mayor through to our director of public works at Dan Locke. And I did talk to him this morning because he seems that his department is always in need of equipment as the city grows and grows and grows, and there's two or three or four items under three hundred fleet and equipment that completely that go directly to his department that he's been playing a waiting game on for this, some of this equipment. And maybe Dan can comment on that because I understand as we can give a round of applause and a clap that one of these big expensive pieces of equipment needed for this time of year has arrived to the city of Woodstock.
Through your worship, just I think what the page you're looking at is seventy-six and so there's a few unspent ones. I can tell you that they've been ordered. We have received the the leafback. It is it is here. So that's, I think, the one you were referring to. And the the rest of them have all been ordered except for the, excuse me, except for the so we find the leaf lid, it shows us not having been received. We have received that one as well. So the rest of them have been ordered and we're waiting for delivery on them. All the ones that look like they haven't haven't had any movement on them, but they have actually been ordered. So you know, we're the larger vehicles, we do see a considerable build timeline on them, and that's been extended a little bit in the last little bit due to COVID. So, you know, it was around eighteen months on a plow fully set up with the cabin chassis and then having the box and and plow and wing put on. So when we get those builds now, it's about twenty-four months, borderline twenty-two to twenty-four months. So it's a bit of a waiting game, and we'll carry over anything that that hasn't you know, been delivered as of yet.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And next up, we have Highway fifty-nine and Petula Ave, Class EA. We'll councillor Accioni and councillor Lotter?
Thank you, worship. I move by myself that Woodstock City Council accept the report entitled Draft Petula Avenue at Highway fifty-nine intersection municipal class environmental assessment master plan environmental study report dated November eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, and that the notification regarding the completion of the study be circulated for public comment in a thirty-day comment period beginning November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries. And look for more information on that coming out. This has been ongoing for a while and no immediate plans for for the work there. It could take quite a little bit of time, but this is very important for traffic flow as more more piles of dirt will be made on the south side of the four oh one for for all the new jobs coming our way. So you'll find out more and be able to comment on that. And with that, we have nothing else on the agenda, so we'll move right along to addresses by council members. And we'll start today with, let's see, councillor Schattenberg?
Thanks, your worship. Two or three things I want to mention, just a reminder that the city of Woodstock ornament exchange, so reusing or repurposing, we always think about that very much. So in our Environment Advisory Committee, it's taking place on Cowan Park Sportsplex. Of course, that's on Ridgeway Drive. Shop for free on Saturday, November twenty-seventh, from eight thirty to one. And of course, you get these new-to-you items because they've been dropped off by citizens of the city of Woodstock on the Thursday, November twenty-fifth, or the Friday, November twenty-sixth, between five and seven, and they're organized out on tables and you sort of go through the room based on the protocols for COVID. And as they say, shop new to you for free items at the ornament exchange. That's a an annual event and a lot of great work's done on that. We've been joking the last a couple of meetings about the sports update. So here's your junior CEA sports update. And the Doherty Division, the Woodstock Navy Vets are currently in third place, Todd. They have a record of nine, two, and two, chasing Wellesley and Tavistock, who both have similar records, just a couple of points ahead. And New Hamburg is nine, three, and one. So it's going to be a battle for those four teams, I would think, to make the semifinals. Navy Vets. And New Hamburg is nine, three and one. So it's going to be a battle for those four teams, I would think, to make the semifinals. Uh, Navy Vets uh. Host New Hamburg on Friday night at seven forty-five and then uh, host Hespler the next Friday, November twenty-sixth at seven forty-five. So that's uh, important and uh, talk about high school. Here's a high school sports update, Todd. Uh, the cast knights have won the uh, Thames Valley Football Championship. They beat the East Elgin Eagles eighteen to two yesterday. And uh, tonight in the NHL against the New York Rangers, Jake Musson will play game number six hundred and fifty in his NHL career. So we congratulate him for that.
Thank you. And uh, let's see, we'll go with Counselor Accione.
Thank you worship. Uh, start off by saying uh, great turnout at the Senate House for Remembrance Day. So thank you to everybody that did attend. It was nice to see so many people spread out and wearing masks and everything else. So I, I think it was a great, great. Job done. So thank you to city staff and everybody else involved in that. Um, want you, of course, don't forget, stay tuned to your uh, what's on Woodstock Magazine. This month is uh, November and December. So keep it handy. Starting with Friday tomorrow night, of course, we have the lighting of the lights at six thirty at Museum Square. So hope to see a lot of people there. Um, we're kind of joking earlier, my wife has me doing ballroom dancing at uh, Cowen Park this Saturday. So uh. There's lots of activities to go out and deal and here in the city. So uh. Make sure you do that. And of course, uh, Santa Claus Parade is coming up December twelfth. Deadline for any applications is December third. So make sure you go onto the city website. There is an application form. Where you can apply and have your business or organization involved in the parade. It is a day parade. Don't forget, it's a two o'clock start on Sunday, December twelfth. So. With that, uh, have a good week, everybody. We'll see you soon. Thank you. Be safe.
Counselor Loder.
Thank you. Although the gallery is currently closed due to major roof repair, the gallery's website is chock full of fun. And engaging virtual resources from puzzles to artwork projects. And exhibition tours and webinars. So I encourage you to check them out and uh, get your fix of artworks. And just a reminder that there is a stunning display of quilts, felting, weaving and other displays. Uh, a fiber um, art across Canada currently on view at the Woodstock Museum. And hope to see everyone out tomorrow night. And I understand there's two special guests. So let's see who they are. And uh, as uh, Counselor Accione saying on the website in Woodstock, just check out all the. Programs that's available both at the museum and the library. And thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Pedder.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, since Counselor Shattenberg scooped me on the, on the vets and the, and the, and the cast knights. There's one that he didn't report on and this one is very interesting for people that know hockey or even people that don't know hockey. Uh, two weekends ago, the under eighteen junior Navy Vets went up to Georgina, Ontario for a double A Silver Stick tournament. That's not abnormal and it's not abnormal for a Woodstock team to win either, but you have to understand how they won. After making it to the semifinals, they won in overtime in about thirty seconds. So not too much stress there. So they went to the finals. And again, they went to overtime and overtime is a five-minute, five-on-five. Nobody scored. So it goes to a two-minute, four-on-four. Nobody scored. So it goes to a three-player, three-on-three, two-minute. Nobody scored. It goes to a two-on-two, two-minute. Nobody scored. It went down to a one-on-one and Josh King of the under eighteen Woodstock Junior Navy Vet scored. I've never heard of such an overtime setup going that far, but they did. So they're now on their way to uh, Sarnia for the International Silver Sticks. In uh, January. And uh, Mark, you got the rest of it, but that one, that's a big one. I have never heard of that in my life. So congratulations to that team. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, no curling updates?
All right. Okay, hang on, hang on. I gotta mention something. The last council, I mentioned that. The vets being undefeated, they immediately lost two games. They, they've come back and won two since then, but I thought, uh, see, that's what happens when you jinx them. Well, our mayor also mentioned the curling team. They immediately lost every game after that. So I don't know if we should talk about teams that are in the midst of doing something. We better just wait to see how it pans out and report on that.
Thank you for that and no sports updates for me going forward. Uh, let's see, we'll go with Counselor Tate.
Well, I just want to remind everybody to get downtown and shop local and go to the restaurants and uh. Enjoy our downtown. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Talbot.
Thank you worship. Um, I agree with Counselor Tate. Um, as if everybody's um, been downtown or driving through it. It has been a beehive of activity, uh, getting ready for tomorrow night's um, celebration with the turning on of the lights, which uh, Counselor Accione has already mentioned. But it is also the beginning of Ding Dong, the tax is gone. So um, participating merchants. Um, you don't have to pay tax between tomorrow and the twenty-first, which I believe would be Sunday. Um, look in retailers' windows to find out if they're part of the Festive Friday. Um, participants and they will have specials. So you want to check those out. And um, the downtown BIA is going to be offering uh, rides with Santa again, carriage rides. And they are going to be starting on November twenty-sixth. They will run Friday nights from five to eight and Saturday afternoons from twelve to four. You can book your ride at the BIA tent at Museum Square, weather permitting. And they've also got something else new, which um, should be uh, a real attraction. It's going to be an arts market and it's going to be located at four seventy-six Dundas Street, which is the old Dairy Capital Cheese Shop. And it is going to, I'm sorry, former Room Romance Jewelers, my apologies. Um, and it's going to feature local artisans and their products. So make sure if you're looking for. Um, that very different gift for someone special to check that out. But um, all of downtown will be uh. Ready for your business. So make sure that you shop local. Thank you.
Thank you. And uh, just want to say. That uh, we're into budgets and uh, that's here at the city as well as at the county. We've had our. Uh, budget overview at the regular county council session. We've had our, our first county uh, budget special session. And uh, we have a couple more to go. So make sure you follow along with that. Uh, there's been. Uh, quite a bit of discussion in the community regarding uh, some of the poverty issues that uh. Uh, are not unique to our community. Of course, uh, there's been a lot of support from other communities. Uh, for our motion that the city put forward, asking the province to look at uh, the various ministries and uh. Getting them together to, to look for some better solutions and uh, some of the discussions that have been taking place in the community, of course. A lot of great ideas from people. It's uh, a little different. Here in Woodstock than other communities that you're familiar with because we're governed a little different. And uh, we do have some amazing people doing great work at uh, the Community Health Center at uh. Uh, some of the places like Operation Sharing and Salvation Army. Uh, there are community partners through Oxford County Council. And uh, the county administration there. And there's some outreach that happens from uh, Canadian mental health, et cetera. So uh, all of those great ideas, make sure you share those with those agencies that have the funding. So get a hold of the. Uh, Oxford County Community Health Center, get a hold of the CMHA, get a hold of uh, Operation Sharing. And uh, of course, the county of Oxford. And uh, we'll continue to work on things. There's a, a notice of motion that uh. Uh, was in the last regular council agenda at the county that was brought forward. Uh, we'll be discussing that in the very near future and it deals with. Uh, uh, looking at uh, the plan. So all of the various committees that have been formed that include. The uh, government agencies, the nonprofits, the uh, outreach. For uh, individuals on the street or suffering from mental health or drug addiction as well as politicians, those. Committees, there's, there's many of them and uh, we're, we're trying to harness that all in the right direction. So. Uh, continue to stay informed, uh, watch the county council meetings and talk to those agencies. And uh. We also have, we've experienced our first little bit of snow, although it wasn't enough that uh. Many people would need to uh, shovel their walkways or laneways. But just a reminder, we do have uh, our Snow Buddies Program here in the friendly city. Where we match up uh, young people that are eager to earn those volunteer hours in order to graduate. And uh, they, they go through the program here through our clerks department. So if you or you know somebody. Who either has a, a physical disability or uh, could use that extra help. Encourage them to get in touch with uh, the clerks department at City Hall. And uh, if not, uh, you can always call on uh. Counselor Pedder. I know he likes to shovel snow. So with that, uh, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Counselor Pedder, seconded by Counselor Accione, all those in.